To the agenda, I need to add an executive session for two items. Tom, you add?
I'll be discussing the ongoing union negotiations. We can discuss some current legislation issues that I wanted to talk to you about as well. And there's also a third thing, I believe, is relative to a particular personnel issue, a particular...
Okay. So there's three items?
Three items. No actions expected on that.
I have the addition of a budget transfer for the police department and also a resolution going forward for the fingerprinting technology also related to the police department.
Okay. I have mine, uh, players for recreation for winter work at the Louisian Ice Room. Okay. Anybody else? Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Uh, I know he mentioned this at the last meeting, what Bill Goddard has not been excused. The abstract.
Make a motion to approve the regular abstract, the claims, excuse me, numbered three thousand three hundred twenty-two to three thousand four hundred seventy-four, recommend the payment in the amount of two hundred sixty thousand sixteen dollars and thirteen cents, plus opposed to order thirty-six thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. So move approval of meeting minutes from eleven twenty-five. Regular town board meeting.
Move to approve the regular town board meeting minutes of November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-nine.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm gonna accuse myself since I wasn't here. Um, department head concerns, chief.
I'm on the agenda.
Okay. Tim Masters. Jackie, you're on the agenda, Bill Conrady, anything?
No.
Dave Train?
Shawnee Volunteer Park Department, we'd like to know if they can have the features of the shoe department.
And we've already declared nexus. And I believe Tim and I looked at those many a time and you want them gone. Okay? Yeah. So we've already declared nexus, that's fine. Does anybody have, do we need to make a motion on allowing, giving them to Shawnee Fire Hall?
You might as well, since it's a...
Okay.
Yeah, then I have a letter out, just give it to Dash and I'll sign it.
Okay. We have a motion, Elbax and then, um, Ramon Luello. Discussion?
What question? They command taking away, dismantle them?
No, I'm dropping them off. They're taking them off. Once I get them there, I'll take them off and ask, take a look at them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? So...
Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Dan?
Uh, the water department has to need the transfer money for, um, our badger meters, our software go longer. It's finished. So I'll have to transfer some money to purchase a new system.
Okay, I think that's under finance, so if anybody's got a question, I'll let you add that one. Okay. Carol, anything for, no? Okay. Finance?
Yeah, and four, budget revision. Good evening. The first one is moving a total of thirty thousand five hundred and three dollars from the police personnel budget to the police equipment budget to cover the purchase of a new fingerprinting ID machine booking. And we'll approve the rest for the officers.
So who?
Seeker.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
And that takes care of one agenda item for me too, so.
Okay.
The second is to move four thousand dollars from the highway unemployment insurance budget to the general repairs out of department personnel budget to cover the expenses of utilizing personnel from other town departments.
So move. Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Carry.
The third one is move the total to eight thousand two hundred dollars from the repairs, safety and training contractual budget in the highway department to the general repairs seasonal help personnel budget to cover expenses of seasonal help.
So move. Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
The fourth revision I have is for twenty-one thousand nine hundred and eight dollars coming from the water transmission and distribution personnel budget, with twenty thousand four hundred and eight dollars going to the water transmission and distribution equipment budget, and fifteen hundred dollars going to the water transmission and distribution contractual budget to cover the purchase of an upgraded water meter reading software system.
So move. Second. Motion second, all in favor? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Is this strictly software or is this...
Just the fifteen hundred dollars.
The, um, the twenty thousand four hundred and eight is for the software, as well as a pad to read the software. The fifteen hundred dollars is the annual maintenance fee, which is not included.
Okay. Anybody else, any other questions?
I'll just speak to that real quickly. That's, that's relative to badger software and water meters, which I believe it was two thousand and sixteen the board passed a resolution standardizing that equipment and also declaring the sole source of that equipment to be, I think it's Lock City. So I reviewed that paperwork and it fits within the standardization, sole source resolution. So you don't need to move forward with any kind of motion on that, other than moving the money into the appropriate place.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Carry. All set? Okay, seeker for Lower River Road Park.
I'm gonna address that?
Sure, sure. I, you know, I'll start with kind of a bit of a, bit of a history, it's been a while, so I'll give everybody a little bit of a... April twenty-fifth of two thousand and eighteen, we sent out lead agency coordination letters, okay? Declaring the towns intent to act as lead agent on this project. Letters were sent to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, New York State Department of Transportation, New York State Department of State, New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation, also referred to as SHIPPO, Niagara County DPW, United States Army Corps of Engineers, Niagara River Greenway Commission, and the Western New York Land Conservancy. Okay, so we sent out a whole bunch of lead agency coordination letters. That was the first item. We received comments back, I should say, no one objected to the town being lead agent, everybody was fine with that. We got comments back from the Army Corps of Engineers stating that, um, if we're gonna be working on or near or under the river, we have to coordinate with them for recorded permits. That would involve potentially the kayak launch in the dock there, proposed by the water. No surprise there. Got a letter back from Western New York Land Conservancy simply concurring and consenting that the town be lead agent, no further comments. We got a letter back from New York State Department of Environmental Conservation with some standard items, including reminding us that they also need to permit the kayak launch, okay, because they have an Article fifteen protection of waters permit, encouraged us to coordinate with them during design, so they can have an idea of what we're trying to do. The project involves a serpents of one acre or greater, which requires a SWIP, no surprise there. They state the towns an MS four community, which we know, also need, also relevant to the SWIP. They talked about the whole site appears to be within an archeological sensitive area, okay, which again is no surprise for those of us familiar with the location in the town of Lewiston, of course. More on that in a second. And they talked about FEMA identified the area to be within the designated one hundred year floodplain. All fairly routine stuff, none of which was, which was much of a surprise. The New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation recommended or required, I should say, a phase one archeological survey and study that was done, if you recall, the town hired Morton Archaeological Services to conduct that study, a series of test bits and nature review that has been concluded. And we have received what is called essentially a no effect letter from SHIPPO, stating that they reviewed our report and the follow-up documentation and everything was fine, there's no historical artifacts there that we have to worry about. So we got a green light from SHIPPO. Okay? So that was a bit of the history of, of some of that stuff. Everybody's aware, we had prepared a site characterization report, took four rounds of samples, eighteen different samples. That, these, our report has been submitted to and signed off on by New York State DEC on two separate occasions, that being February fifth of two thousand and nineteen and also again on June twenty-fourth of two thousand and nineteen. There were fourteen questions that proposed by the town environmental commission. We responded in writing to all those as well. I believe that has satisfied the environmental commission's thoughts to those questions. All that being said, we then prepared part two and part three of the environmental assessment form, okay, which has been submitted to the town prior to this meeting. And all that has resulted in what we believe and we're recommending as town engineer, a negative declaration to the project, okay? And having said all that, that has resulted in town attorney, Mr. Seaman, preparing a resolution that's in front of you for consideration, obviously.
In regards to that, in a letter from the environmental commission, they are asking that after we complete the seeker, they, they just want a change, an opportunity to review. So, um, and I have that letter here. Any, any questions? No, no, any questions? Want me to read up into our resolution?
Sure, I could if you want me to.
Sure, go ahead.
So the title is Town of Lewiston State Environmental Quality Review Act Negative Declaration and Notice of Determination of Non-Significance Development of Low, Development of Forty-three Fifty-eight Lower River Road into a public park. And it states, whereas the town of Lewiston is considering the development of a certain parcel property located at forty-three fifty-eight Lower River Road, Lewiston, New York, into a public park to increase public access and provide additional recreational opportunities, said development, which will include construction of new roads, additional parking, picnic shelters, walking trails, scenic overlooks, landscaping, pedestrian enhancements, and related park amenities. And whereas the town has previously circulated notices of its intent to act as lead agency with respect to the project for purposes of conducting a review under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the implementing regulations of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation adopted thereunder New York N one, six NYCRR, part six seventeen, hereafter collectively referred to as SEACRA, to all involved and interested agencies, and has received no objection to its serving as lead agency. And whereas a full environmental assessment form, an EAF, was prepared by the engineering firm, GHD, on behalf of the town of Lewiston and was submitted to the town board and which EAF was also, also circulated to involved agencies for input pursuant to SEACRA. And whereas the town board has circulated, or I'm sorry, whereas the town board has considered the project and reviewed the EAF and all comments received from involved and interested agencies in light of the criteria set forth in SEACRA in order to determine whether the project will have a significant effect on the environment. And whereas the town of Lewiston Town Board has also considered the environmental concerns related to the parcel and has reviewed various forms of information, including but not limited to the historic development of said parcel, the site characterization reports of said parcel prepared by GHD, numerous questions and statements submitted by the public with responses from GHD, and in-person presentations before the town board and the Environmental Conservation Commission. And now, therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Lewiston hereby declares itself lead agency for the purposes of SEACRA review of the project, and be it further resolved that based upon the information set forth in the EAF and for reasons more fully set forth in parts two and three of the EAF, including recommendations, which shall be complied with by the town board, the town board hereby determines that there will be no significant environmental impacts with regard to the project and hereby adopts and issues a negative declaration under SEACRA with respect thereto. And be it further resolved that the town supervisor be and hereby is authorized to execute any necessary documents in conjunction thereto.
Make a motion for approval. Motion for approval? Do you want a second?
Second.
Motion second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So move. Thank you very much. Now, in regards to the park also, now it is time where we're gonna hold a public informational meeting on the concept of the park. And what I'm gonna do is I'm going to get with Jeanette Calasano at the senior center and give us some dates. And then on the thirtieth, when we have our next meeting, we can pick a date that works for everybody and hold that information meeting at the senior center. I'd like to do it before the end of January, or maybe the first week of February. So I'll get some dates from Jeanette and moving forward, that's the next step, so. Thank you very much. Uh, sewer credit, ten forty-three Ridge Road.
Make a motion to approve sewer credit in the amount of sixty-four dollars and eighty-one cents to Stephen Gladkey, Barca Gladkey. Again, ten forty-three Ridge Road, Mr. Ritters reviewed this and approved it as in line with our current policy.
Thank you. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Council Memorial hires for the ice rink?
Yes, we have the ice rink and also the basketball program. I'd make a motion, the hire as presented.
Make a motion?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? One lot subdivision Creek Road.
See, if I'm going, I have to accuse myself, Mr. Ori was a client of mine.
Okay.
And I assisted in, uh, the mortgage, it's probably so.
You wanna take care of that?
Yeah.
Okay. Put it on myself.
The planning board meeting, a regular session on November twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, reviewed a one lot subdivision for property owned by George Oriol, located on the east side of Creek Road, SPL number eight eight point zero zero dash one dash forty point one two. The planning board recommends approval of the subdivision as presented. The board classified the subdivision as a minor, to be treated as a minor. A negative deck was also recommended.
Okay. Make a motion?
So on this, you guys need to address SEACRA as well, so you just need a motion accepting the planning board's recommendation of a negative declaration on that, so that you make a determination on SEACRA and then just a, another motion for approval of the, of the subdivision.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion as a negative deck from the environmental commission.
Second.
Make a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, so move.
What's the other one, Tom?
Just to approve that subdivision.
Make a motion, approve the subdivision as presented.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? So move.
All right, go ahead. Yeah.
You ready? Yep. Go ahead.
The planning board meeting in regular session on November twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, a site plan review for Lady of Peace, fifty-two eighty-five Lewiston Road, SPL number one one five point zero zero dash one dash two point one two. The board recommends approval of the site plan review with the condition that the town of Lewiston is not responsible for any damage to asphalt or concrete surfaces. The town has to work on the watering. And then also a negative deck is also, for the seeker is also...
Same thing, we gotta do negative deck first?
Negative deck.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion, accept the negative deck. Motion, can we, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay. Motion to accept the site plan review as presented.
Would, would, I imagine you wanna make it along with the condition that was imposed by the planning board relative to, uh, the asphalt and concrete surfaces.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Carry. Okay. The HVAC contract, town hall senior center.
We put out a bid, have a two-year contract for the HVAC for the senior center and the town hall. All right, we had five bids come in. And do I need to read them, Tom, or do I...
You don't need to read them. No, you don't need to read them, because they came in, they came in low enough that you've, you've followed what's necessary with regard to the town's procurement policy of collecting those bids and putting them down, so that they're recorded. But you don't need to read them.
I'd like to make a recommendation on we accept the proposal by D and M Refrigeration for twenty-one hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents for two times a year as presented in attorney writing up the contract.
Second with discussion?
Okay, with motion second, go ahead.
I know you and I talked about this, Rob. This is Christian that can say this, isn't it?
Well, it's basically to check out the furnaces and the spring, the air conditioning, cup kicks on, and clean the cotton weed out of the, uh, what do they call it, compressors?
Yeah.
And then in the fall, to change the filters on the furnaces, make sure they're not leaking, no carbon monoxide, and fan belts are working. So this, I think this'll work well. For then, every two years, we can revisit it, you guys revisit it two years and see how, how it went. We had something like this when I got on board, but it was, I think it was four times a year, which I thought was excessive. And we were doing it ourselves, but I believe it's something that keep going and just works itself.
And there's also several units.
Yeah. Yeah, there's four, four air conditioners, I think, on the senior center alone.
Yeah.
And then the furnaces also. So we got them, we got a motion and...
Yeah, we motion second. Any other questions?
I'd just like to see this stuff, we were saving mine.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? So move. The CSEA wastewater treatment plant contract. Wanna take that one, Tom?
Yeah, I can speak to that. As you're aware, Supervisor Broderick, we've been going through over the, much of the summer and into the fall, the ongoing union negotiation with regards to the wastewater treatment plant. And we've reached an agreement, which I've discussed with everybody at length throughout the course of, of these negotiations, often in executive session, but I've also circulated the contract to everybody. So all I need today is a motion to approve that contract. The, um, the union is also in agreement with it, so we just need to approve it and move forward. If you have any questions about it, I can certainly answer them.
Tom, is this the final step, or does the union have to vote on it?
The union still has to vote on it, but they've already voted on a tentative agreement that just incorporated all of the changes, so it was just a couple-page document the union has already agreed to. So, yeah, this is, there's one more step, I guess, but, um, we don't anticipate any type of problems moving forward from here. Once you guys vote on it, we give, the, the motion should include an authorization for, uh, Mr. Broderick to sign on behalf of the town, and then I'll have three originals that we'll send over for them to execute from the union, and we'll keep two, and they'll keep one original. And we'll be done with that for, until the end of twenty twenty-three, I believe it runs.
Make a motion to approve the CSEA wastewater treatment plant contract.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Make a second motion to authorize Supervisor to sign, saying?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I wanna just commend, uh, Tom Seaman, his brother Brian, and Jackie worked hard on getting a contract that's about in, uh, in a small town like this. It's never fun sitting down with your own employees, who you respect every one of them, working on a contract, but, you know, definitely, when you get to the end, it's, it's very gratifying, so I appreciate everybody's hard work on that, so. Under the police, you want to...
We've got a resolution for the ID fingerprinting, um, equipment. Resolution for standardization, police department fingerprinting software and equipment. Whereas ID Networks provides hardware and software designed for fingerprint processing and record management, hereafter quote fingerprinting technology. And whereas the town of Lewiston Police Department had previously obtained such fingerprinting technology from ID Networks pursuant to a grant and its continued use of said product. And whereas said fingerprinting technology is now faltering and in need of upgrades. And whereas the town of Lewiston Police Department is able to obtain said upgrades to the fingerprinting technology directly from ID Networks, such that a third-party vendor is not needed. And whereas the town of Lewiston Police Department anticipates upgrades to cost between ten and thirteen thousand dollars. And whereas the town wishes to maintain uniform use of software and hardware related to fingerprinting technology. Now, now, now therefore be it resolved that for reasons of efficiency and economy pursuant to the authority conferred by General Municipal Law, section one oh three five, it is determined by the, this board that this is a need for standardization in the use of fingerprinting technology in the town police department. And be it further resolved that the town standardized the fingerprinting technology to ID network software and hardware. And be it further resolved that the town police department is authorized to upgrade the fingerprinting technology in accordance with this resolution without the need for bidding or gathering alternate proposals. And be it further resolved that the town chief of police is hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents to enable such a purchase, subject to approval of said documents by the town attorney.
Make a motion, is it second?
Second.
Second. Second, any questions?
Um, just getting exactly what you mean. That's the, to replace that system would be thirty thousand dollars. The software, as, as Mr. Seaman stated, the software is proprietary, so it's just like upgrading your phone. You can't upgrade an Apple phone through Android, so to get that, what we need, I think this'll, this'll at least get us through the, the next ten years, hopefully, with the, the technology.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Make a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Let me also, I don't know, if you wanted me to address the vest situation, just so the boards are aware, for the purchase of the vests, that's under state contract as well, so it's, that's...
And that's for the additional money that's being transferred, which is...
Right. For the two, it was for the fingerprint and for the vest, the vest are under, under state, interstate contract.
So with regard to the vests, I'd ask someone to make a motion to authorize Chief Prebet to execute any documents necessary to purchase the vests, again pursuant to attorney review of those documents.
So move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Both motion second. Okay. Privilege to the floor, nobody has signed up, would anybody like to speak? Yes?
On, on the town park, is there a budget line, or maybe a budget column is more appropriate, to the funds that have been spent and the, the expected funds that are going to be spent?
Yeah.
And what's in the budget for that?
We had a general, in, I mean, you can call me tomorrow, or no, you can't call me tomorrow, you can call me Thursday, for exact numbers, but we, through Greenway, we approved seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funding. As far as what's been spent and everything, I need, I need the studies or anything like that, I can get you that Thursday.
And the seven fifty, is that all Greenway money, or is...
Yes, all Greenway money.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the upcoming meetings, environmental commission is December tenth, seven P M. Historic preservation, December seventeenth, at six P M. Planning board, December nineteenth, at six thirty P M. And the next town board meeting, regular town board meeting and final audit is December thirtieth, at six P M. So it will not be the fourth Monday of the month. It will be December thirtieth, at six P M. Also, offices closed on December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth for the Christmas holiday. And I would ask for a motion moving to executive session.
Want to take, throw one thing out?
Sure.
I think we should all commend the highway department. I had like a Florida snow on top of my leaves, and, um, I thought the leaves were gonna be there till springtime. And the entire street, everyone's leaves were buried under the snow. As soon as that snow was reasonably gone, it sounded, it came out. And I don't know about everyone else, but all my neighbors are happy, really happy.
Nice work. Okay.
Supervisor Broderick, before you go into executive session, I remember there was some conversation about, in an early meeting in January, was it?
Oh, yes. Six, yeah.
Because if so, you should declare that, so that it become, so that it's, um...
You're right.
So that they notify the public in time.
We have to have our rework meeting, uh, first Monday of the month, which is the sixth. And what I wanna do is hold the work session that night as well, so, um... Do I need a motion or anything to do that?
I would do a motion to do that, and, um, yeah.
To declare this special meeting?
Yeah, because it's not a regularly scheduled meeting, right?
Right. So move. And also the work session, so, for January sixth, and then that would, uh, no work session on January thirteenth, so. With motion... With a motion of second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. So I ask for a motion moving into executive session for union negotiations, personnel item, what was the third one, Tom, I'm sorry?
I just discuss after current legislation.
Legislation? No, we're not gonna take any action.
Any action.
So move. Good, a motion can we go second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I wish to ask, yeah, Merry Christmas, everyone.